And the July 5th regular council meeting will now come over. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Ms. Gentry, would you please call the room?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
Attorney Thomas Trask.
Here.
Thank you, Patty. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Leslie Notaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Zabel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we move to citizens' comments. If any citizens would like to address the council about a topic that's not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and we'll be called on. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium. I'll give us your name and address and...
Sure. My name is Patrick Drummond. I'm the son of Lee Zoom Drummond, who's the property owner on 114 16th Street, Bellator Beach, for the last nineteen years. I'm here on behalf of my mother to address a $29,124.97 fee/lease that's been levied against my mother's property for a 2021 $100 landlord registration fee. The landlord registration fee was paid on February 26, 2021, via bank-issued check. And proof of payment was provided by Fifth Bank and a document was given to the city manager. And it appears as though the city did not process the payment that was made. Once I was made aware of this, I made the payment in person to the city manager along with penalties and reassessment. The city continues to invoice my mother for this fee with a 7% increase to this day. But the city changed its landlord-registration contact address of mine without notifying either me or my mother. Had my mother and I been given a chance to resolve this issue before it reached this level, we would have. Today, I'm simply humbling asking for an amicable and fair resolution to this matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drummond. We're aware of the situation and I can assure you we will look into it.
Is it okay if I pass out a copy of the payment?
Um, I tell you what. If you'll give a copy to the city manager and he'll make sure that we all get a copy.
He'll give a copy to the city manager.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Alan Mintz, owner of 125 8th Street. And my family and I have owned this house since the 1970s. I'm here today because we have a problem with a plant called the Norfolk Island pine, which is actually an exotic plant, not indigenous to Florida. On our, on the adjacent property to ours, there are two of these trees that are just growing out of sight. And one, the largest one, has got a big incision down its middle. And it, at this point, has to be regarded as a potential catastrophe since there are several houses that order up on where these trees are. Actually, they're not trees, they're conifers. And they go back to the beginning of time. And I'm going to circulate pictures of the damage caused by the wind shear of 2020, when we had like a mini tornado here and it damaged the streams around like the wall and forced me to be in the pool quite a bit to get the remains of that tree out of there. Since 2003, the adjacent property has been abandoned. The hall on the property has been torn down, but the two Norfolk Island pines on the property remain and continue to grow and grow significantly. I'm going to add at this point that there are 22 of these Norfolk Island pines that I've counted in this area. You can go out the front door, turn left, and you'll see five or six of them. They are huge and they're growing and growing. And they're growing in years where we haven't had hurricane issues and climate issues. The climates here seem to indicate that may change. According to the research done by the University of Florida, Norfolk Island pines thrive in humidity, bright light, and have high salt columns. The research also says this naturally physical tree does not hold up well during hurricanes. The tree can lose all its branches in the wind. I have spoken to the owners of the property twice. They have never resided with the property and live out of state. Mrs. Perez, who might know, is one of the owners. She was in Bellator Beach several years ago. I also spoke to her son Malcolm on several occasions regarding my concern and telling him of the damage. Both owners did not respond to my concerns. Today, I am here to share my apprehension about further damage or destruction to my property in addition to the huge size of the largest...
Mr. Mintz, you can either close those thoughts, okay? We've gone past the three minutes and we'll be glad to speak with you going forward after this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizen comments? All right. We'll move on to item number three. This is a presentation from Fire Chief Jeffrey Davidson of the Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District. And this is concerning the future of that district.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and our community. Thank you for allowing me some of your time tonight to talk about the future of the Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District. My name is Jeffrey Davidson. I'm the fire chief of Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District, proudly serving the city of Bellator Beach. I was blessed to come here to Pinellas Suncoast in November of 2021. I've been serving in the fire service for 34 years now. I have a master's degree in public administration, a master's degree in emergency and disaster management. And I'm very proud to state that I'm a United States Army Reserve veteran. So thank you again for having me here. At the time that I was hired here in November 2021, our new finance director, Aaron Brooks, also came on board. And since we've been here, we've taken a deep dive into the financial situation of the district. We presented to our Board of Commissioners at our May meeting, showing that we have a serious financial problem and that we would look into all areas, which included some scenarios to help fix this situation. However, none of the scenarios that we studied were able to provide a permanent solution. I said to my commission at our meeting in May that I would come back in June with a recommendation for a permanent solution. And I wanted to be able to share with our residents that problem and recommended solution. Well, I understand I have a few minutes and thank you very much for your time. Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District, for those of you who are not aware, we started in 1953. And now we are known as Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District since the year of 2000. We currently have three fire stations throughout the cities that we serve, which included Indian Shores, Indian Rocks Beach, Bellator Shores, and Bellator Beach, and an unincorporated area of Oakhurst in the county. So when Aaron did our deep dive into the finances, we did put together a small graph. It's kind of hard to see in such a short period of time, but I'm more than happy to meet with anyone and everyone to explain exactly what I'm going over. But if you see there in the green slides, that shows our revenues, that's our income. The red is our expenses and the blue bar is our reserve fund balance. And we have a very unique situation in that we have a fixed income. There are 18 fire departments in the county and we are the only ones that have a fixed income. And that is just the way that our charter was written, that it would have to go to the voters to change that. So you can see over time, the green, there's some changes in the middle here where we had an increase and we were to get a refund for some CARES money. But the green on the right side just stays flat. And the red, you see our expenses keep going up. We need to replace fire trucks and equipment, training. And to balance those, we've happened to use our fund balance, which you can see in the blue, continues to go down, which means by fiscal year 2025, we will be out of money. So we did a five-year projection and we looked at a few scenarios. So here's the five-year projection. I understand it's kind of hard to see. But again, I'm more than happy to meet with anybody. This is also on our website, psfrd.org. But we need a permanent solution. So in our five-year projection, you can see here that fiscal year 2025, we go negative. And we put a couple of scenarios together. Can you hear me okay? Okay. From here, it sounds like I'm a little muffled, I think. We put a few scenarios together and we looked at. We've been working extremely hard with the county on some things such as our EMS funding, which has been underfunded for many, many years, back to 2010. And we're looking at if we were to get our funding back to the minimum levels and if we were to get a reimbursement on a vehicle that we paid for, what would that do? And that does not solve our problem. It buys us some time, it buys us two more years. And we feel pretty good that we're working positively towards that, but it's not a permanent solution. Next, we looked at if, what if we cut our services, which we never want to do? What if we cut personnel and compensation by 25%? And you absolutely cannot do that. Even if it were possible, it only provides a couple of years and we're still in the financial situation that we're in. So we analyzed all these things and come to present that we need a permanent solution. A solution that includes the replacement and strategic location of our fire stations. We have three fire stations. One, which is not a permanent fire station, it's actually rented space. Another one, the other two actually are over 50 years old and in dire need of replacement. And we do not have the money to replace them. We also need to build an emergency operations center, which is where we would run and help run Bellator Beach and the other communities during times of extreme incidents, whether planned or unplanned, things such as hurricanes. So our stations during a hurricane when the storm is actually over us, there comes a point where we have to cease operations, keep them putting people in the streets until that storm passes. And with the beaches, our stations have to evacuate to an emergency operations center where we can continue to plan and work together with the agencies for the next week and what's going to happen soon as the storm passes and for the next week. And we do not have that facility. Let me show you real quick some of our fire stations. We've had lots of visitors here lately to come visit them. But this is our station that's in Indian Shores. And you can see it's not an actual fire station. There's been a dire need for one for many years and land is very hard to come by. But we needed to provide that service. This is actually a rented space in an office building. And the truck, the branding truck, is sitting outside. And that's a bank building with lots of traffic. This is our station in downtown Indian Rocks Beach in the business district. And this station is from, built in 1965. And if you can see on the very left side of the slide, that little portion right there, that's the original fire station from 1965. And it was built on and added to over time. On the right side, you see a picture of that. We had to evacuate for a few days to be tented for terminus. But one of the things that we want to do with this permanent solution is relocate that station further north and to be able to serve the city of Bellator Beach with better response times. We've identified some properties on the northern end of Indian Rocks Beach and we're going to continue to be able to build a fire station there and serve Bellator Beach. And then this is our station on the mainland, which is from 1971. It's over 50 years old. But you can see that that's not a hurricane-proof building. It's not even a hard rain-proof building. It's kind of sad. But our firefighters live there to serve and protect 24 hours a day, maybe seven days a week, 365 days a year. This is the location that we own this property and this is where we'd like to build an emergency operations center as well. So real quick, the picture on the left is our fire station 28. And on the right is a modern fire station. The difference in not just the aesthetics, but everything that goes into the planning for the health of the firefighters and for response times and cleaning of equipment. And one of the things that's so bad with all of our fire stations, going back to this station here, we don't have any public meeting space. This building's not ADA compliant. None of our buildings technically are. So we can't hold our meetings there. So we rotate between this facility and Indian Shores. And we want to have a place that we can hold our public meetings, but also not be in the light building. And to add to that, with all the things that have gone on with COVID, firefighters and paramedics go through an extreme decontamination process through every patient contact that they have. And they need to have a place where they can shower and change their clothes and do everything that they do before coming into their living quarters and then eventually bringing that home to their families. That's a top priority force as well. We had a guy hit pretty hard with COVID last year. All right, I'm going to try to speed up these. There's just a couple more pictures of some modern fire stations. That's Clearwater Station on the beach that's under construction. St. Petersburg Station 7, which is their model for other fire stations, and Dunedin Station 61. Those are just some pictures of what modern fire stations look like. So again, Aaron and I did a 20-year projection. And in that, we included everything that we need. Not the things that we want or the things that we'd like to have, but everything that we need to survive. We need highly trained personnel. We need fire stations. We need firefighters. We need paramedics. We need equipment. We need training. And all these things to survive and provide the best service to our community. We came up with a 20-year projection on how we could accomplish those things, which includes the rebuilding and relocation of all three fire stations to better serve our district. And we came up with the lowest number possible to accomplish those things. At our meeting in June, our Fire Commission Board meeting in June, I presented a permanent solution recommendation to my board. I just make recommendations to my board. And that was the addition of an ad lorm tax to our existing funding formula at a .67 mil rate. And that number was the lowest number that we could come up with that accomplishes all these things. And that's where the 20-year projection is. It's very hard to see on here. But through that, we build and pay off all three fire stations. We get our reserves to where they need to be. Right now, we're at the bare minimum of reserves. But once we go any lower, then the state has to step in and that's going to be an issue. So we need to get ahead of these things and there's no time line today. The, my board took, I had asked them to direct me to go seek the ballot language to be put in front of the voters in November. I'll bring that back in July. And again, I'm speaking of it, but it has not been approved by my board yet. But the way we are going to have it written is that it would be a fixed rate of .67 mil rate that can never go higher unless it were to go back to the voters. But we did a 20-year projection and it should not be to go any higher unless, say, 10 years from now, we have such an influx of population and realize, hey, we need to add a fourth fire station or more personnel or whatever for our fire department ratings and to better serve. It would have to go back to the voters. So in our July meeting, I'm going to present the ballot language to my board and they will vote to move forward on that or not. And between July and November, once, let's see, it is approved by the board in July, between July and November, I would like to meet with as many residents as possible to show them what exactly this is for, where the money would be going, and what, never to tell anybody how to vote, but here's what will happen. If this passes and if it doesn't pass, we will cease to exist. That's just a painful truth of it all. But being able to get this passed by the voters, it's a solution that builds healthy fire stations in the best locations. It allows us to be fiscally responsible and cost efficient. It gives us the best response times with how the stations are built for flow. And a sustained disaster district serving this community, I want to say forever. But without that, we're not going to exist. I had left some business cards in the back. My information is up there. Jeffrey Davidson. Aaron Brooks is our finance director. Again, you can see any of this information on our website, psfrd.org. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions with anybody at any time. Just give me a call, my cell phone number's on my card. More than happy to meet with anyone and everyone for total transparency on what we need here for the district to continue to serve. One thing I'd like to add is I have 44 families that depend on serving in this district. 44 families that depend on being employed by the district. And if things get any worse, some of those employees are going to start to leave and we're not going to be able to replace them. And this district will get dissolved. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions without taking any more of your time today. Thank you very much for allowing me to present today.
Chief Davidson, I don't have a problem taking questions from the council. I don't want to go into a long discussion, but if there's a burning question that someone would like to ask now at the time. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Brad, you probably know the answer to this as well. Is this on the Big C radar?
Well, yes and no because this district only covers Indian Shores, Indian Rocks Beach, and Bellator Beach.
And Bellar, and Bellar Shores.
Bellar Shore, right.
Right, as far as the Big C goes. And we also have 5,300 parcels in the mainland there as well. But as far as the Big C goes, no. Because it only goes, we only go down to Indian Shores.
So my condolences for having to care for a high-value asset parked in a solidly environment, I know what that's like. Response times? I mean, we've heard you stand up before and say we have world-class standards for response times. So, I mean, why is this an issue? How much are you going to shave off that in the future?
We do have excellent response times into all our areas. But as you can see with the population growth and the density this weekend, give an example, you're not getting anywhere anytime quick. Even with lights and sirens on, you're lucky to be going 20 miles an hour pedestrians all over. And we need to be able to get to any emergency. The county standard is seven and a half minutes. But we've been doing that in the four and five-minute range. And we want to be able to continue to do that. But we can't plan when it's too late, right? When it's so bad that we can't get there. Now we've started planning and funding. It's going to take two more years. We need to get ahead of the problem. And that's where the study came in as the best place to relocate our fire stations as well.
Just one last question then is, you talked about an ad lorm case. And I'm wondering is, is a user fee a candidate for this thing? I think of it more as a level playing field where everybody receives the same service. So rather than, you know, make it disproportionate depending on what you own as property, why shouldn't everybody be charged like a flat user fee type?
Well, that's a great question. But that's how it has been here for the longest time. The way our charter was written, it was a flat-rate fire assessment fee. And it's not sustainable. Currently, everybody does pay a flat-rate assessment and there is a disparity. And depending on the value. There's a lot of things, I'll give you some examples. If you live in a 400-square-foot home, right? You pay $360. You know, a mobile home, for example. Mobile home catches on fire once it's going. Reality is, we're there for about two hours and it's going to be a total loss with the minimum amount of firefighters being put in danger because we're going to do defensive operations, things like that. So that same homeowner is paying $360 for that single white mobile home could live in the 5,000-square-foot home and they're also paying $360, which is a big difference in resources. You know, that home, you know, we could be there for 10 hours with 40 firefighters. So there's a big difference in that and the disparity when it comes to a flat rate. We did increase our flat rate for the voters back in 2019, knowing that it was just a short-term solution because that rate never increases. But our expenses continue to increase. So the only solution would be to have the flat rate and a small ad lorm. Now, that is the permanent solution. Take out the fire stations if we didn't need the fire stations, which we do. Let's say we had three fire stations that were brand-new and paid for. We would still need an ad lorm to survive. It would just, would be a smaller ad lorm. But the good thing about the way it's going to be presented, if that's what is approved by the board, is it's capped at a .67. Cannot go any higher. It can go lower, right? But once we get into that 20 years and the fire stations are paid off, they're going to be looking at what's the next 20 years going to look like. And I can't tell you if we were not here, what someone else would charge you. I can't tell you that. But I will tell you that the milage rate for Clearwater is 2.62 mils. And the milage rate for Largo is 2.91 mils. So even with, and somebody's going to have to provide that service. So even with the flat rate and the .67 milage rate, it's still much more cost-effective and less money to the citizens. But you're also having your, this is your, this is your fire department. You have control over this fire department. You tell me you need something, something, I mean, we're going to plan for that, we're going to be there. That's just what we do. That doesn't necessarily happen when you get stuck into a bigger organization. Like, you know, I spent my career, I grew up in South Florida, retired from there. And it's totally different when you get lost into a big fire department. So you have your own community fire department here. And I'm sure that's what everybody, that's, we love it. We absolutely love it. Our firefighters love knowing people in the community and being out there. So again, I couldn't tell you what somebody else would charge you, but that's what they currently charge to people that live outside their city. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Anything else on the council?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm like, it's a good night to choose to be here because clearly there's something hot on the agenda. So you've got a lot of people, a lot of people listening. But back to the flat rate. I have to say, your scenario of the, of the mobile home compared to a 5,000-square-foot home, that doesn't play out when you're looking at a 1,000-square-foot condo. You have to go through a building and defend everyone in that building.
Absolutely.
And so that's where the flat rate is really where, when you look at it from a common sense standpoint, we have several condos on our beach. And that probably makes better sense in a flat rate. And I would like to see, I mean, it would be nice to see how the scenario works out at a flat rate and what that looks like for all the residents rather than...
That's one thing that I'll be able to do. We have an interactive spreadsheet from the property advisor's office, which this week I should have the updated version. But I'll be able to sit with every single resident and tell them exactly what this would cost them. And there is a difference. There's some, someone might see it... There's some, someone might see an increase of $8. Somebody could see we run scenarios where somebody has an increase of $60, you know, and it depends on the assessed value of your home, how long you've been there, if you have saver homes, there's a lot of variables in there. But I'll be able to sit with each and every person to let them know what, what this would cost them.
Yeah, I think the flat rate is just a more equitable share, if you will, of services. And we appreciate everything you do. I can see the added value to bringing in new buildings and that sort of thing and certainly wouldn't be behind it, but I'd like to get more details. So I'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Chief, I'm also interested, are there any other communities in the county that are just doing flat rate?
No, sir. We, so in this county, there are 18 fire departments. There are 14 dependent fire districts, which those are ones that are attached to municipalities. And there are four independent fire districts. It's ourselves, Eastlake, Palm Harbor, and Neelman. They all have ad-ala-orm. We're the only ones in the entire county that do not have an ad-ala-orm. That's just the way our charter was written, but it's been a long-term problem. Like, we've always had to go back to the voters. We made some small increases, knowing it was not a permanent solution. So we are the only ones that do not have that. That's just how our charter was written.
And didn't we attempt that once before in the past and the outcome of the election was challenged?
Yes, sir. So a lot of people who know, so it was brought to the voters in 2016 and it passed successfully to implement an ad-ala-orm. However, the ballot language was thought to be unclear. They had talked about lowering the cap. So the state statute is 3.75 mils. The charter, our charter is three mils, but the state statute trumps charter. So the cap on is 3.75 mils. And in that, they had talked about asking for a half of a mil. They didn't talk about a cap where it could go to, but they did say that they were going to lower the cap. And it was challenged because some people thought their taxes were being lowered when they actually weren't paying a tax. So that they get challenged and it was ruled that it was unclear. There were some things that happened in those years where some of the residents had felt that there was deception there when, I wasn't here, but there was, there was not, it was just poorly written language. And then it continued that we knew we needed this, but at the time, they didn't, my predecessors didn't feel it was the right time to go back to the voters. So we spent years reestablishing those relationships and building healthy relationships. And we're at the point where this is something we absolutely have to do.
Okay. I think Councilmember Shirley has raised a valid point. I would also like to see the math done where everyone that's paying a flat rate now, they get, they, there's a payment hike and let's see where it meets them in the middle somewhere, just so that we have other options. I do know that if we lose this fire district, that the county will charge way more than what you're proposing, but I don't know what that is.
One last observation, we just went through the stormwater user fee thing and my recollection of the process is that it's not chisellement granted. Those rates can't be adjusted within certain bounds and if you want to go outside of bounds, there's just a public hearing process.
No, sir. Well, I'm not saying no, sir, on what you're talking about. I'm talking, no, sir, on our ballot and how we're going to present this. So the way it's going to be written is, it's going to be capped at 0.67. It cannot go any higher.
No, I'm talking about users' fees, not the ad-ala-orm. I'm talking about, we went through this stormwater user fee thing and my understanding of the process was that that's, that isn't chisellement granted. Am I mistaken? I thought within a certain bounds, it was adjustable.
I understand.
And if you wanted to go outside of bounds, there was just a public...
The way our charter was written during the state of Florida is any increase, actually even a decrease, has to go before the voters when it comes to the assessment fee. That's just how our charter was written.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Again, I left business cards in the back. Maybe they'd like to call me. Thank you so I know to...
Councilmember Roberts has a question.
Hi, T., thank you for coming tonight. So, you know, I think, Councilmember Jody, that if we just go with one option, I think we may find that this hybrid approach may actually smooth things out with two different groups. When you were talking about the condos versus homes, my guess would be, and I haven't looked at the numbers, that if I'm in group A, you know, I may say that, well, the flat fee for me, just with a flat fee, doesn't work as well for me as it does for the group B. But if we're able to kind of like smooth the curve with having part of the revenue coming in with a flat fee and part of the revenue coming in with an ad-ala-orm, I think you may find at the end of the day that both of the groups, just using the groups as a condo group and a home group, may actually feel that that's more fair in the long term. Just guessing because I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I think that may be a good approach. You're saying all the other locations use only ad-ala-orm?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is that something you guys talked through a little bit?
Yeah, and that's an excellent point. And that's what this would be. This would be a hybrid system where there would be the flat rate and an ad-ala-orm. Because if you, on your points, if you were to take the flat rate that everybody pays and convert that to a milage rate, right, take the flat rate divided by the value of the home, there's a huge disparity in what some people pay. Some people pay, you know, one mil in, you know, percent, where somebody else might pay one quarter of a mil when you compare the values. So those are great points. Yes, sir.
All right. I appreciate you coming out and presenting the information to us.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Very interesting and we, I'm sure we'll be discussing this more.
Thank you.
All right. Now we are on to agenda item four. That's the law enforcement report from Sergeant McKnight over the Pinellas County Sheriff's
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have with me the May 2022 monthly report from the sheriff's office for the city of Beller Beach. On the first page for the UCR property and personal crash report, there is only one crime reported and that was for an assault. The second page shows number of arrests made in the city during the month of May. There were five people arrested for a total of six charges. And if you have any questions, please, please stop and ask me.
We'll ask you at the end.
Okay. The third page shows the deputy activity. There were 714 events in the city of Beller Beach for the month of May resulting in 826 units responding. That's a combination of calls for service from citizens and also proactive law enforcement activity from the deputies assigned to the beach. The last page shows the crash report and citation analysis. There was one crash on the causeway during the month of May. And then there's a total of 191 combination of citations and warnings issued in the city of Beller Beach during the month of May.
Any questions from the council? Mike Sabal?
Yes, and actually two. Where was the location of the assault and is this considered an imminent danger of increasing or, you know, any further danger to our residents?
No, it was not. The assault was a passenger in a vehicle. The driver of that vehicle was arrested for DUI and then the passenger was arrested for both resisting arrest without violence. And then once he was being placed in the car, he kicked the deputy in the head.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? And I'm pretty sure you just kind of went right over it. Did you read our code enforcement report also? You did not?
I did not. I'm not familiar with how...
That's quite all right. I heard citations and I was, I jumped right over to, I'm looking for the citations written in a few homeowners. All right. If there are no other questions, Sergeant, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Now we have the code enforcement report. Is anyone here to present?
Mr. Reifler, mayor and council, this is the code report for the month of June. If you're lucky, most of the focus was on permitting and construction permits. Couple of things to note, the, there was a short-term rental that was picked up and also a failing lift that was noticed and it's under dogs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reifler. All right. So let's move right on to item number five. We have a presentation from the floor of leading cities. Councilmembers Lloyd Robertson, Mike Sabal, please join me on the floor. Any word special? So I'm just going to read the letter on behalf of the floor of leading cities. I am pleased to award this certificate to the completion of the Institute for Electing Municipal officials, Jacksonville Board, held on June 10th, 2022. It is our sincere hope that you found the program challenging your clock. We encourage you to take advantage of other training opportunities throughout at the LC University. We also invite you to register for the next offering of EMO2. They're not registered. That stands for Institute of Electing Municipal Officials, but it's kind of funny. We all call it EMO, Wing Registration Opinions. You can find dates and locations for other trainings on our bank account. So I will start with Councilmember Lloyd Robertson.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Please be noted I graduated first.
Why, by me? I'm ready. And the next report goes to Councilmember Mike Sabal. Moving right along, we're up to item six, which is the quarterly board reports. Do we have a report from the board of adjustments?
Good evening, council. I'm Mike Kelly, the chairman of board of adjustment. As far as quarterly report, last quarter was pretty quiet for our board, but we did have unfortunately a resignation for a person that resigned from our board to move on to another city board. So hopefully tonight on your agenda, you folks will handle that and put another person in that particular vacancy. There is a board of adjustment meeting set for August 11th, at which time we hope to have a board. So it's up to you and we hope you'll do, you'll do diligence tonight and replace that person that resigned.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Rod Segatik, Chair of the Citizen Advisory Council. We had four meetings this month. The Citizen Advisory Council also serves as the audit committee, which includes Councilmember Nataro, who we meet as the audit committee. So we met to review the preliminary budget with the mayor back on April 12th. And then the committee also met June 13th where we reviewed the annual comprehensive financial report draft. We agreed that it properly represented the financial results of the fiscal year in 9/3021. There were a couple of changes to some footnotes that we requested that needed to be done. Then the Citizen Advisory Council, we met on May 10th. We reviewed the city manager hiring process. The council was engaged to review initial applicants, score applicants, and we reviewed the score sheet, reviewed the timeline with the current city manager and the mayor at that meeting. And then on June 13th, we met to review and accept the scoring tabulations that we had calculated in that process.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Mike?
No, I just want to thank you very much. We really appreciate all the due diligence, the work, especially with so many applicants for the city manager position. So thank you again and please pass on our thanks to the rest of the committee.
Well, thank you, councilmembers.
Vice Mayor, good morning.
You submitted an email to the council with regards to the city manager hiring process and you went there to talk about it. Do you want to recap or...?
No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to express that was my own personal opinion. That was not an opinion of the council. And we didn't have time to really address and review all of the, I believe it was 31 applicants. It was a large number. You know, we scored them. But yeah, my personal recommendation would be to slow down. This is a long-term permanent hire. I recommend hiring a recruiting firm to really, you know, weed through and maybe find some other candidates that are out there. But we had a handful of candidates that met the scoring tabulations that were put together. But having been involved in hiring process for over 20 years, I just think this is time to hire the right person for a long-term position. Again, that's my own personal opinion.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is Park and Record.
Hey, everyone. Good afternoon. Tammy Lavenda, Chair of the Park and Record. So for this quarter, just a couple of recaps. We did have one community event, which was the Fly Me to the Moon event. Very successful. It was our first run at having a weather day, so we had moved the event from outside to inside. We do need to find a better way to let people know that it wasn't canceled because we did have a good turnout, but I think some people kind of saw that we weren't outside and then they left. So in the future, we're going to try to better communicate the fact that all of our events except for Halloween will be in or out, rain or shine. So we will figure out a way to make it go. And we're also able to send Lynn Reeves off with a little retirement farewell at that event, so that was nice. We have three proposed community events that will be presented to you later in the agenda. And so I believe you have the budgets for those and I can answer any questions when we get to that. We will be doing our Health and Wellness Fair January 14th of 2023. Last year, we had 23 healthcare providers from Bay Care to Publix with their organic line. We had Dr. Trevor Quick, dentists, we had just the gamut of healthcare providers. For this coming up year, what we would really like to do is find more healthcare providers that actually live in Beller Beach. So with the help of Jody Shirley and some other people, we were able to find three to five that actually live in Beller Beach that serve bigger communities. But it'll be on the website early, so we're hoping to have more of our residents share their knowledge and their business with our residents. So that's coming up January 14th. And then, let's see, okay. So for the time being, we have suspended the blood drive. We've been doing it for over a year and the numbers are kind of dwindling. So maybe it's because it's summer and, you know, people have gone to their other homes, but we might look at doing it in the future. But for right now, we're kind of looking for something to replace that. They do it all the time as a public... They do it all the time at Publix across the bridge. There's lots of places that are close that a few are a diehard donating blood every time that are close. We still are having yoga, but just in the building because of the heat. We're not having it at Morgan Park just because it's usually very crowded and people are paying for parking, so we'll probably bring that back when it gets a little cooler outside. Something that I didn't know until recently, it's not through Parks and Rec Board, but there are tennis lessons that are, there's an instructor, and they go through the city. So if anybody's interested in that, you can call City Hall. I know, right? I think we're going to add that to the Parks and Rec Board, like, list of activities just because it fits. Parks and Rec Board Beach Survey, we did one since our last quarterly board report, and I'm hoping it's going to be on our website, on our page, where you said what Parks and Rec Board survey, and then the outcome and the suggested, like, we have it kind of broken down in categories where things that are easy fix for the maintenance people, things that are already on, like your radar that need to be fixed, repaired, replaced, and things that are kind of like on the wish list down the road. So it's on a nice spreadsheet that Kyle helped us put together, so we're hoping to have that on our page as well, so people can see what we are working towards getting accomplished. Our beach cleanups are still continuing every first Saturday of the month, so I'd like to thank you to all the volunteers that come. We really appreciate your help. We had a good volunteer, like, group this holiday weekend, so that was great. So every first Saturday of the month, we meet at 19th Street at 8:00 in the morning. It's for one hour, and then afterwards, we have, like, water and donuts or whatever, and then you're out of there by 9:15. So not a bad way to start your Saturday. Beller Beach Logo and Wear. So we started this about a year, year and a half ago, and it's going really, really well. Like, as soon as we get some of the things in stock, they're sold right away, especially if they're tied to the event. So we did get some new Beller Beach t-shirts and tank tops in stock, and they actually have the correct established in 1950 date. It took some while to get that correct, just because our provider wasn't really cooperating. But we have hats in stock. They should be here anytime. The beach towels, we've had two sets that sold out, but so right now, we're working on logoed hand towels, so those should be in shortly. Those will also be listed on our website with the pricing, and then there's the Beller Beach license plates. Last time I was up here, I mentioned the Beller Beach Community Foundation. So since that last update in April, we have made progress. The board has been formed, and we are 75% through the paperwork. We are just getting ready to fill out the application for the 501(c)(3), which obviously is the part that takes the longest. But so far, we are moving right along, and I'll continue to update as we make progress. And then also, if anybody has any suggestions, I know you can call City Hall. My number is all over the website. One of our most difficult things that we have, and I know it kind of spreads across everything, is spreading the word of what we're doing, even if it's on the sign in the front of the building or if it's on the website. I just think a lot of people still aren't seeing it. And you'll see that in one of our proposed events, it's going to be the first, one of our first events, we actually are trying to sell tickets to. So we're going to try to, we need to get more people to know about it, I guess. So word of mouth. But if anybody has any suggestions, we would greatly appreciate it. And we do have two board openings right now. We have one that you'll vote on later, but we also have one after that. I think that's it, though. Does anybody have any questions?
Anyone on the council, questions?
What was the event? What was the event you were referring to that you mean word of mouth?
Oh, the one, oh, the Chili Cook Off in November. Yeah, so we'll be selling tickets to that, and it's the first event that we'll have, we'll be selling tickets for, like, beer and wine. We've never actually done that at an event, so we're, it's a new thing that we're trying because it's kind of always been bring your own if you want. But we're going to get all the liability, and you'll see that in the spreadsheet with the budget, because people have been requesting it. Like, they show up and they ask, can I get, you know, a glass of wine? And we just, we haven't, we haven't done that so far.
I have to admit, I've never heard of chili and wine. But hey, you know.
More beer, I don't have beer.
Any other council members? No? Oh, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and the last quarter board is planning and zoning. Do we have anyone from planning and zoning tonight? Okay. And that case, we'll do right on to item number seven, which is the City Attorney's Report. Mr. Trask, you have the floor.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm coming for Randy. He's on vacation with his family. He said to pass on, he's continuing to transition here at the city into the city attorney. He's been working with the city manager on a couple of different items, and he'll continue to do that, and he's available anytime, at least, once he gets back into town. In the meantime, you can contact me if you have anything. Can I have any answering questions if you have any in the city attorney's office?
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Trask? All right, thank you. Now we move on to the City Managers' Report. Mr. Reifler.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, we have the upcoming drainage project evaluation, which I am going to have taken care of the video of the pipe sometime this month. It's kind of tight dependent, so we're scheduled right now for July 22nd. Could be, depending if we can free up their schedule. From there, we plan to use those videos to help design future options for the next stormwater project. We have the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding coming up. We currently have the numbers for the Phase 1 of the project. I'm in the process of getting together the Phase 2 numbers to discuss in my upcoming workshop. The total cost, looking at completing Phase 1 or possibly completing both phases, and what the different numbers would be, and what, how that would affect us moving forward. We have the 7th Street Seawall and Boat Wrap renovation that's tied together with the 16th Street Seawall renovation. That is currently, it, notice to proceed has been given, and we're just waiting on the county to get through the permitting. That has a start date of July 11th. And from there, we have the City Hall Seawall project, which would be right out back here to help prevent some of the eroding that's occurred over time. That currently is, the bid date is to be determined. Funding was increased for the 7th Street and 16th Street seawalls, but we have more funding coming into the budget with the upcoming year, so that's something to consider moving forward to get that done. And then we have the Children's Playground replacement that's currently on the agenda tonight.
Counsel.
Is there any update for the 12th and 13th Street projects?
We got the results back from the 13th Street video, and I made sure that the engineers had seen that, and then they followed up with the recommendation, and I had Patty Florida later on got that email.
Okay. Okay. Is that going forward?
The project?
Yeah.
It's currently going forward. Any other questions? Mike Sable.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I really, I really need to point this out. Last meeting, we had a vote for to approve that project going ahead. Some people lost sleep over it. But I reviewed the video. There was catastrophic failure on one of those pipes. It was a collapsed pipe. In addition to gaps between the pipes, root intrusions, we're going to make the video available to the public so you can review it. I believe it's on like the fourth video, around minute 36 until when they're saying, yeah, this pipe collapsed. So I just want to let you know that, yeah, we had a problem. The council went out, we took care of it, started the work on that project, and there was a good reason for, you know, frankly, it was gone. That's all.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, go ahead, and I'll come back to.
Since you brought it up, you did vote to go ahead and move forward before the videos were taken. So that was a dangerous situation. In addition to that, I've asked our, you know, city manager to take a look at what fixes are available out there, because there are fixes available for joints that aren't working well, where you can repair them from the inside without replacing the pipe. So just to make you aware of that, please step way out there.
But again, we had a collapsed pipe.
We did have a collapsed pipe, so you can fix one pipe.
All right, gentlemen.
Well, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Baker. This is my rebuttal, I'll use any city council, about 13th and 14th, 12th and 13th Street. I think it's during council meetings, why I voted for it. But what I wanted to ask the city manager, entrance and manager, Mr. Drummond got up about the fine on his mother's home. Is that on your agenda to try to resolve this? Because I don't understand the whole thing. Now, a bounced check and go from $100 to $29,000. Unfortunately, we have a three-minute time limit for Mr. Drummond. I don't think he could express himself.
The whole $29,000?
$29,000 worth. I would like to see him resolve.
My plan is to review the paperwork he's given and compare it to what we have in our file, and then send it out so that you guys can see.
All right.
Can we have a meeting, maybe Mr. Drummond and I with you, and go over this?
When you get, when you get everything ready?
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, please be aware that the city attorney is also looking.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments?
I just had a quick question on the City Hall Seawall Project. When will you have, it just says the date will be determined, so I know it's off in the future. Are we proposing that the beach goes away and that we have that all as seawall out there? Is that what you're, is that what you're proposing? Are the drawings look like? I don't know, I haven't seen it.
Currently, it had some, like, geomatting and some riprap, and that was supposed to help prevent the erosion. When we did the stormwater project, we had some of the machines come over and try to replace the riprap to get into the better spot to prevent future erosion. But it is happy with the, with the water coming up higher and slowly eroding away the land back there. So we had a design of a seawall being installed to, you know, like a permanent fix, to level it off.
Yeah, I mean, it's just flowing out into the channel and.
Yes.
You know, shadowing the channel. It's not as though the seawater is rising, it's just a movement of one of the processes. And so now we have seawall, that's what I'm trying to find out, because we, does anyone see any drawings on the ground here? Just being curious if you could share that with us, that would be great.
Yeah, we have drawings, so we can, sort of project of what the cost would be. You might need a little bit more money pulled in from what we're lining this year's budget, but it could be doable, so look at throughout the biggest year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we move on to item nine, which is the City Works Report. Mr. Tadree, you have the floor.
Council made their decisions to move forward, to contact the candidates and see if they're still available and offer them the opportunity to apply for the position. So that's what we're working on now. And then the Board of Adjustment, we're just beginning to start that process, which is, you know, mailings notifying the surrounding residents and getting everything ready for the hearing. And that's what I have for now.
Counsel. Patty, today was the first day you were going to contact those candidates. I think there were seven. How did you make out with the week to this?
Well, we haven't started yet.
Oh, we haven't, okay.
Yeah. But we're going to start tomorrow. I'm sorry, Councilmember Baker.
Anything else? All right, we are on to item number 10. We're finally into the consent agenda. So this first item is approval of the May 16th, 2022 City Council Word Session Minutes and approval of the June 1st, 2022 Special Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now we're on to the regular agenda. This is item 12. It's consideration of ordinance 20-02. Mr. Trask, would you please read the summary for us?
So this is ordinance 2022-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, providing for an amendment to section 30-141 of the City Code of Ordinances pertaining to the Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for approval of an amendment to section 30-141 of the City Code of Ordinances to establish the boundaries of vessel exclusion zones in the city's coastal waters, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with them, providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 22-02 by Title O.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. Do I have a motion? Motion on this ordinance? Okay, the motion dies. All right, so now we are on to agenda item 13. Consideration of Resolution 2022-04. Mr. Trask, would you please read the summary?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 2022-04, Resolution, the City Council of Beller Beach, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2022, 2023, non-admirable assessment role for the Bellevue Estates Island Assessment Area, directing certification of the assessment role to the Penniless County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date. That was the reading of Resolution 2022-04 by Title O.
Do I have a motion on this Resolution 2022-04?
With the approval, okay. You want to? You go ahead, you are one of us.
All right. Leslie Notaro, and then seconded by Jody Shirley. Mr. Notaro, you have the floor.
I have no comments. You know, turn it over to Kyle, or the city attorney, you have comments on it.
This is, this is an annual requirement of the assessment role to have it certified.
Yes.
Just wanted to question, are there any changes over the previous years?
Not with any of the pricing. We have, I believe, only one property payoff.
Okay, so that's the only change here. Any changes?
Other council members? All right, any comments from the citizens? All right, back to the council. Leslie Notaro, we have in the last word.
No further comments.
All right. We need to, I think we can just get away with a voice vote, or because it's a resolution, it needs to be a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, well, let's do it.
Councilmember Notaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Yes.
Councilmember Sable?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. Seven to zero, it's unanimous. Resolution 2022-04 is on the books. All right, we're moving right along to item number 14. This is consideration of approval for Parks and Rec Board Proposed Schedule of Events. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jody Shirley, do you have a second?
Second.
Mike Sable. Jody, you have the floor.
Yeah, I think that, you know, looking at the scheduled events, they're timed appropriately. The budgets don't seem out of line. I like what the Parks Board is doing, and I think we should support them on what they're doing.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Yes, it's not.
For the Halloween costume contest, item Dog Water Bowls, description Halloween donuts, $150.
Are we paying too much for donuts, or are we paying too much for dog water bowls? Is that what I'm talking about?
Just want me to stand up?
Just curious.
Typo?
No. Last year, we did apple cider and water and donuts, but this year, because we couldn't, there's a wedding that's Saturday, so we have to move it to the Sunday after.
Let me interrupt you for one second.
Sure.
I think you're, it's a typo, and she just won't. I think you're, it's a typo, and she just wants clarification. It's item two on the Halloween costume contest. It says item is dog water bowls, and the description is Halloween donuts.
Then it might be a typo.
Okay, so which one is it?
Both of them, right.
It's not the dog bowls.
Okay. Fair enough.
Just curious.
Oh, no, that makes sense. I, it was revised like 10 times, so it was probably just a typo. If you want me like to explain that, I will real quick, because last year we did a parade, which we are not going to do again. We are going to do more like a trunk or treat, because we definitely needed the time for the judges and all of that. So we're going to try to find some volunteers, but the city will also have their trunk per se, where we're handing out candy. So that will kind of cover donuts, but also like beverages and duck treats and all that stuff.
Great. Any other questions from the council?
On the holidays, social tree lighting, I don't know if this, I guess this might be more your area, Kyle. We seem to always pull the tree lighting down right after January 1st. A lot of towns leave their trees up till the 5th of January 6th. Can we do something on council by leaving the tree lit till the 6th?
Yeah, I think that's not a problem. Typically, just after the holiday, we bring it down, but we can make effort to keep it up to that date.
Does that need to go anywhere, Mr. Mayor?
It's not even, it's not even on the schedule. There's an end date for sure. That was just what the city manager was doing, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council or comments? All right, let's take it to the citizens. Thank you. Comments or questions from the citizens? All right, back to the council. The council member, let's see, Shirley having the last word.
I have a question.
Okay, this one, I believe we can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, looks like we've got three events in the near future. Now we are on to item 15. This is consideration of appointment to the board of adjustments. Person's name is David Gardella. Before we begin, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Which is, which is by Frank Baker, seconded by Jody Shirley. Frank Baker, you have the floor.
I believe his application for appointment speaks volumes, and I believe we should put it away.
Any other questions from the council or comments? No? Is Mr. Gardella here?
Yeah.
Mr. Gardella, would you like to come and address the council?
David Gardella, 705 Harbor Drive. I also happen to be the fire commissioner for Bellar Beach, so just if you have any questions or this run up to the chief's plans for referendum, let me know. But I like to volunteer my time and effort for the board of adjustments. I understand we just meet when there's variance application, and I like the fact that Bellar Beach, for the board of adjustments, you make a decision yea or nay before the application, and that's the final, final decision for the city. I know our neighbor down the street in the rocks, they got a board of adjustment committee. They vote on something, they can approve at 5-0, but the council could vote the next month and deny it. So I'd like the fact that the board of adjustments here, sir, studied the issue and it's the final vote. So looking forward to helping out, being available.
Thank you very much. While it's here, anyone have, have any question for Mr. Gardella? Vice Mayor?
I just have a question regarding the constraints for, I know the charter talks about board of adjustment and not being able to sit on other boards or committees, and I just want to make sure there's enough merit to break the fire question.
So you're asking, because he's a fire commissioner for the Pinellas County or the fire district? Yeah, I just want to make sure there's no conflict. I, you know, I personally have no problem with it, but it's a lot is to become an issue, you know? There is no conflict. The question comes in is, is it dual office holding? So I think that we probably should take a look at that. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, because I need to look at the charter. I'm not really that familiar with it. I need to look at your charter and your code, too. So you can approve it subject to the city attorney's review of it, and then if we find that it's a, it's a pro, it's prohibited or the dual office prohibition, then we can bring that back to you and let you know that, and give it to appoint somebody else. But let us, let us research that. Is it dual office? What issue?
Any other council comments?
Wouldn't he just be able to resign? Or is other one?
Exactly.
I want to make sure that there is no violation first. If there's no violation, you would need to resign. I will add that I did go through the code, and I, I'm not an attorney, nor do I stay in Hollivian Express, but I didn't see any conflict. However, I did not look at the Pinellas Sun Coast Fire District, so there could, there may be a conflict there. But in any case, I think that this would be just pending final legal review. If we vote to approve you, and then, and then once we get the go-ahead from our attorney, then we'll just move right forward.
Would that make me available for, I guess there's a scheduled meeting on the board of adjustments for August?
I believe we can certainly get you approved between now and August.
Okay.
I don't think that there would be a problem there. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Gardella?
No?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, looking forward to helping out. Thank you very much. Do we have any citizens that would like to speak?
I'm Mike Kelly, and I just came up here to endorse David's application, David's credentials. I've known David personally for over 30 years. He's a very committed person, is a man of conviction, he'd be excellent addition to our board. Thank you. In addition to your comment, Mr. Mayor, you and I both talked about the, we, our charter was written, and we see no conflict because the fire district is basically a county situation. It is not a city board, and as a result, we suggest that Mr. Gardella's nomination be approved. We do not see any conflict whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will still have to wait until we get final approval, but I think this is something maybe that can happen in a day. I don't, is that thing doable? Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so any other citizen comments? No? All right, let's bring it back to the council. No comments?
Does anyone want to make that motion?
Yes, we, someone would need to do that. Thank you so much for calling that out.
So I, I move to amend the current motion to consideration of the appointment of David Gardella to the board of adjustment pending review and approval by the city attorney. We're subject to final review.
Okay, so you're making a motion to alter it to where it's consideration of appointment to the board of adjustments, David Gardella, pending legal review.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second amendment?
Second.
I'm confused. I mean, if, if we vote for this, and then the city attorney says it's cool, do we have to do anything else?
No.
Okay.
But, but we still have to, we have to vote to amend it, and then we have to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, so did I have a second on that motion? Jody Shirley? All in favor?
Aye.
It has to amend. All right, so now we're back to the original motion. This is consideration of appointment to the board of adjustments of David Gardella, pending legal review. Patty, let's see, Patty, would you please call the roll? I don't think about that.
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, so it's unanimous. And pending congratulations. And thank you for volunteering. All right, we're on to item number 16. This is consideration of appointment of an alternate member to the citizens advisory committee. The nomination is for Dr. Brian G. Biller. Do I have a motion?
Move to a plea.
Motion made by Leslie Notaro, do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mike Sable?
Yes.
Leslie, you have the floor.
I think, as I said, the resume speaks for itself. It's a good position.
Any other council comments? No? All right, is Dr. Biller here? Dr. Biller was not able to make, but any of the citizens like to speak on behalf of Dr. Biller? Nope? Last chance for comments. All right, let's bring it back to the council. With Leslie Notaro having the last word.
Mayor, I want to just add a couple things. His resume is quite impressive, I agree. He's not a registered voter in the city, and I know we have some restrictions on council positions regarding registered voters. But where are we, or is it that you have an N A? Does that mean he's, we're not, the information's not available, or he's not a voter? What does that mean, Patty?
A committee member does not have to be a registered voter, only a board member.
My understanding, it's in our code.
Right.
It just brings to question when we have the advisory committee, who, you know, I kind of put a high level of faith in, and if they're not a registered voter, I'm not sure how that affects our citizens.
Right, I understand.
I'm going to go a little further on that. The resume looks great. However, if he's not a registered voter here, that probably means he's, he, his home's set somewhere else, which means the majority of time is living outside of the city of Bellar Beach. Now, I could be wrong, this is all speculative, but if it happens to be a snowbird and the greater percentage of the year is not here, even though this is not a standard board, this is one of our committees we've put together, I believe that this is one of our most important committees we have, because they did the hard work and they meet often. So, Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to table this, to bring him in, to discuss this? He may, he may have registered today for all, you know, that's what I'm saying. Frank Baker is making a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's Mike Sable. We're going to have to do this by roll call?
You can do it by voice vote.
You can do it by voice vote? All right, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye, for me as well.
All right, so that's five to two, and the motion is tabled. All right, let's move on to item number 17. This is for consideration of appointments to the park and recreation board of one regular member and one alternate member. There are currently two members. The first is Patty Roberts, who is currently an alternate member, and the second is Deborah DiCosimo, who is a new applicant. This is to fill the vacancy of one person on a five-member board and one of the two vacancies for alternates. There are currently only four, well, that's right, now there are currently only four board members, and this board does not or has one alternate. Names are listed in the order their applications were received. The first was Patty Roberts, and the second, most ever, DiCosimo. So before we begin, do I have a motion for this consideration? Motion? Motion by Baker?
We need to, we need to specifics on the motion. Is it a motion to point Patty Roberts as the full-time board member and Deborah as the alternate, or vice versa?
This is actually a motion to, I'm sorry, go ahead. My motion is to open up for discussion of a vote of the two candidates, possible two candidates. Generally, what we do is we pass out a piece of favor. It'll have, it'll have the two candidates and the two positions, and the council will vote which, which way that each person should be, should represent that particular board.
Okay, I understand. And then, so we all know, then that you need to not only pick the person of choice, and you decide that ballot?
Yes.
And so the city clerk can take that down.
Correct.
Understood. Yes, you have a little bit of a process, that's fine.
Okay, would you like to repeat that one more time?
This is a, the motion is to open up discussion for the two applicants applying to the park and recs board and to vote thereafter.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on Mike's. Sorry, Lloyd Roberts. All right? Any discussion? Nope? All right, is Miss Roberts here?
Not here.
Nope, not here. Okay. How about Miss DiCosimo? Is she here? So neither candidate is here. All right. So let's take it to the citizens. Any citizens that you'd like to make a comment concerning this, these forest assignments? Nope? All right, back to the council. Comments? All right, Patty, would you please pass out the ballots? We have no. Thank you. Why can't I sign my credit? She's talking, that's right.
She can't read her.
Yeah. Give me my credit card receipt. Sorry.
the alternate and Miss Roberts as the member. Councilmember Notaro voted for Miss DiCosimo as the alternate and Miss Roberts as a member. Councilmember Roberts voted for Miss DiCosimo as the alternate and Miss Roberts as the Mayor Gaddis voted for Miss DiCosimo as the alternate and Miss Roberts as the, as a member. Vice Mayor Gunn voted for Miss Cosmo as the member and Miss Roberts as the alternate. Councilmember Shirley voted for Miss DiCosmo as a member and Miss Roberts as the alternate. And Councilmember Zabel? And Councilmember Abel voted for Ms. Cosmo as the alternate and Ms. Roberts as the member.
Okay, so it looks like Ms. Roberts becomes the full member at five to two and Ms. DiCosmo becomes the alternate at five to two. Congratulations to both, both volunteers. We greatly appreciate their service and I'm sorry that anyone's here to be congratulated.
I get dinner tonight, so that's good. I said, and I get dinner tonight.
All these nights, that is a special. All right, we're up to number 18. And this is to authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract for law enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2022/23. Before we begin, do I have a motion?
Motion to table.
Okay, I think, I think Frank Banker had the first. And you can't motion to table until we get to the second. Does anyone have, would anyone like to leave a second on this one?
Second.
Second by Julie Shirley. Mr. Banker, do you have the floor?
Yes, I believe the memorandum speaks for itself and we should move forward with this. I don't know whether we consider to table it, but that's my, my opinion.
Other comments from the council?
I would agree with what he said. Sure, it's been one of the best things we ever did.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gunn?
Would you say it's one of our largest expenses in the city, but the service provided, we've been very pleased with the service. This is a 5.18% increase and it seems within the realm of what's going on in the economy today. I think it's still a good deal. $62 an hour, if you fit around 365 if you play more hours. That's, that's pretty good for a person, their skill set, as well as the vehicle. I'm favorable.
Mike Sable?
Yeah, I, I have to tell you, I have no problem with your comments. And I'm approaching this strictly from a contracts officer. The reason I brought that up is, I used to work for the Navy Inspector General Ferrari and follow up as a deputy director. And we are very concerned about something called an Anti-Deficiency Act. And that's where you're spending money that you do not have yet. And that includes money and projected budgets. Going through the contract, you're using 22, 23 funds. We have not approved that budget. That budget does not get approved for at least another month, month and a half. The council is currently considering changes to not only perhaps the sheriff, but also to the code enforcement. Signing a contract now, one, is kind of breaching the anti-deficiency because we're spending money that we do not have in-house. Two, it blocks the committee into approving regardless of what we see in the budget. We may have to cut back, we're required by law to have a balanced budget. And again, I'm talking just strictly, you know, I could be totally wrong, but I'm coming at this strictly legal. The problem is the timing of this contract. It should not be signed while we are considering the budget from which it is funded. This should be gapped or signed an extension so that we sign this contract with money in the bank and that the council has fully understood and signed up for the obligations in that contract. And we can only do that after the complete discussions of the budget. So, I mean, you don't come with a problem and not a solution. My solution would be to contact the sheriff, extend the contract until it starts October 1st. I would say until after we get a final budget. Once we have the final budget and the money is in the bank, basically after the 1st, we can then legally commit the city to that contract. That was the reason for it. It's not for the services, it just, I have to make you understand, from my perspective legally in government, you can't spend money that you do not have. And we do not have that until October 1st. That's all.
One second, Mr. Reifler. Is it my understanding, am I correct, that we can alter the amount of services that we contract with Pinellas County Sheriff? Or is it a flat rate done deal and we can't change it ever?
We can alter the services on law enforcement, having a code.
I, I thought that that was sort of on the fly. We could, we could raise or lower those services at any time based upon our needs and also our budget.
I know for a fact that in the code enforcement, it says the hours discussed or agreed to, but I think it's city manager, but trying to find it in the, in the law enforcement contract.
It's in paragraph number five of the agreement. The power of the city to direct services, depending on which man you need. I also bring your attention that the contract doesn't start until October the 1st. And we also have a 120-day termination provision in it also. You can terminate it within 120 days notice. So this doesn't lock you in for any period of time greater than that. But that paragraph five says, "The sheriff or his designated shall confer with the city manager regarding law enforcement problems within the city and shall accept the city manager's general policy direction on how the law enforcement services are delivered and to what course for the municipality or particular type of level of service should be delivered to counteract law enforcement problems within the city." And it goes on. So you have a couple of different things there that address that.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was looking for. Vice Mayor Gunn?
I was just gonna say, that's a good catch. I understand exactly where you're coming from with my background, government-wise. So the approval of this, is this something we're just doing to get off our plate right now? Or maybe, is there a timetable we're trying to keep in the sheriff's office? I mean, is this something we could amend? And once again, just final review of the budget process and approve the budget?
Yeah, I, I believe that it's something we can amend, I will double check just to make sure.
The thing is though, I mean, I'll just say this, is that we, different than many government contracts, I'm sure you guys are waiting for funding from a higher government source. In this situation, the taxes are guaranteed, so we're funded. We're not in the same situation as you would be in a contracting position in a military establishment.
I disagree. This is a case where you're a government entity and you cannot spend legally money that you do not have and you haven't agreed to the money or the way we should spend it yet.
We couldn't agree to any contract then because the money comes in over a period of time. So there's not, I mean, that would be, I mean, that, that, you know, thinking of it from that standpoint, I'm just looking at it going, okay, well, we don't get, just because we have these added taxes, we don't get payment on, when they pass, in September, October, we get payment of time.
Yeah, in government contracting, it's very specific, we're talking about the fiscal year. You can't touch any money until October 1st of that year, so you do not have that money. We cannot, and yet, we cannot enter into a contract with nothing in the bank. You can't write a blank check, which is what we would be doing to the sheriff's department. I just want to make sure that we finish the budget, that we've all agreed on the level of services going in so we can negotiate the best rates. But then we can enter onto a contract after the beginning or just prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, knowing that when we write that check, that $11,000 a month, it's a half million contract, that we have that money in the bank legally.
Mr. Sable, Vice Mayor has a comment?
I just want to say that the anti-deficiency aspect of this thing aside, let's just give this thing a sanity check. That is, you're approving our largest line item in the budget before we even hit the final review of our budget. So from the common sense perspective, I would say, aside from the anti-deficiency question, let's wait. I mean, what's the hurry in this thing? This is our biggest line item in our budget so far as expenses go. We haven't even had that meeting and we're already approving that budget now, so.
Was there a deadline? I'll have to check. Is that where? Ms. Notaro?
Paragraph six of the agreement says, "The obligation for monetary payments called to be made here under shall be deemed to exist for less than a year at any point in time and shall be entirely subject to the legislative budgetary discretion of the city." So there's really no conflict between signing it now before our budget is approved. This is on page 6 of 12.
So this just defies, let's, yeah, let's write a check for something we haven't even discussed, whether or not, what's in our bank account or what are our other expenses are. So it just doesn't, it defies my, my, my sense of what, are we acting responsibly for the citizens and being the steward of their budget? I, I say, let's go through the budget process the way we're supposed to do this thing and then sign the checks, figure out what, what we have in our bank accounts.
Thank you. Any other quick comments before I go to the citizens? Is this rate locked in if we don't approve this tonight?
I believe it is, but I'll double check everything on that. Because if it's not locked in, this could escalate even. It is, it's $11,000 a month. It's not a rate check of $19,000 tonight. And we do have a reserve fund. So I don't believe that we violate our budget fiscal responsibilities.
All right, let's, let's go to the citizens. Would anyone like to comment on this? Okay, back to the council a little more time. Yes?
Can I just say, in the past, I know we've had some conflicts like this where we weren't certain and we just took a step back and we had the sheriff come in and talk to us about the contract?
Yes.
We discussed additional hours, we discussed, you know, pulling back some deputies, adding deputies. He gave us some flexibility. He was very candid about talking to us about everything in the contract we had questions on. And so I, you know, I would almost propose that we maybe go that path? You know, just look at that. But I don't want to, I don't want to offer another, something else to vote on right now until everyone has a chance to speak, but just think of it down the path.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I guess I get a little frustrated when I keep hearing the term, "We have reserve funds." We just watched the Pinellas Fire Department show us a slide. They've been astute enough to forecast five years ahead and even 20 years ahead and we have never done that. We talk, we keep talking about reserve funds and never once have we projected our expenses and our revenues past the next year to think, to see what's happening to our reserves. What's the burn rate of our, our reserves? When do we run out of that reserve fund? We've never done that. So I'm, I'm kind of frustrated and I'm, I admire the Pinellas Fire Department for doing their homework. We have yet to sit down and do that ourselves.
Well, we have a strategic plan that mentions what safety about six or eight times in it and...
When was that reviewed, ask?
Correct, okay, so you're saying that we shouldn't look into safety and cut the sheriff out? So everyone here with a present ammo going up, you'll go, should go home and lock and load? I mean, we're not going to cut the sheriff's budget, okay? We're not going to negotiate unless we cut back on manpower. Now, if you want to put the citizens at risk, do what you want to do, okay? Take orders, all right? But these guys, $62 an hour, you're working too cheap in my opinion, all right? You're well worth every dime we pay and more.
No, no one is disputing the cost.
Yes, you are.
Nobody is disputing the line item. It's the protocol and the chronology and timeline of doing it the right way. Let's start doing things the right way instead of just shooting from the hip saying, "We got money in the reserves." I think you will get to the exact same point and the exact same cost, but we are going to do it right.
Just like a government official would do, okay? Drag it right through the mud and come up with the same results, thank you.
Because we're being responsible.
That's not being responsible, being irresponsible.
Point of order, Brandon. Okay, I think that we've talked about this enough for now. We either need to table this or we need to vote on it.
We're to table until we review the budget process.
Okay, I hear a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second the motion to table.
All right, so now we must take a vote on the motion to table. Let's just go ahead and do this on a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banker?
No.
Councilmember Notaro?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Abel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye to table.
Mayor Gaddis?
No. So we're back to voting on this. Okay, so here we go. Let's take a roll call vote on approving this contract. Do you need to bring it back to the citizens, Mr. Mayor, just as you proceed here? We did, all we did was vote and table it and it stopped. We're right back to the original motion, is that correct? That's correct? Okay. So now we're to the vote. Patty?
Councilmember Abel?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes. So the motion passes five to two. And Mr. Reifler, you may proceed with that contract. All right, we're on to item number 19, which is to authorize the interim city manager to execute the contract for code enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2022/23. Before we begin, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Leslie Notaro, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
A second.
Leslie Notaro, you have the floor.
I believe, you know, what has been said before about the other contract with the sheriffs, I think we should do this for the same reason, yeah.
Other comments from the council? Vice Mayor?
This contract is mandable at any time, huh? So let me look at that. The reason I ask is because there's been discussion in the work sessions and at previous meetings about whether or not we were going to review how we were going to do this and create a hybrid or not. When I worked the numbers, we're still at 20 hours a week. So I'm just wondering if this thing is amenable pending future discussion or consideration.
So paragraph six of this contract says, "The sheriff will provide one part-time community police and deputy code enforcement. They shall be provided on as-needed basis. The specific hours of work of this community police and deputy shall be determined by his or her supervisor after consultation with the city manager. The community police and deputy will investigate and take enforcement actions for violations of the city's code ordinances. Will track and prepare statistical reports for the city concerning the numbers and types of violations issued on a monthly basis and interact with both citizens and businesses to address and resolve code violation-related issues." And I would also bring your attention that unlike the previous agreement, a 120-day termination requirement, this is only 60. So it's a lot smaller window, but we have the ability to terminate this agreement. Do you want to do that?
Other comments from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to just add that, again, it's one of those items we discussed in a work session that was brought to us by city manager that they wanted to consider reorganizing how we're handling code. Yet we've got a contract in front of us to hire the sheriff's department to handle code. We didn't address the items we discussed in a work session and right back to contradict the, you know, I'm not sure why we have a work session and we're not going to follow what we discussed in the work session and we bring it in front of the council to vote on.
Other comments from the council?
Well, I think just to reiterate again that the, our legal counsel just read, it is amenable. So at any time, the city manager, the name of the sheriff, could say, "We want the hours to be asked." Which would include 20 to zero if we wanted to bring somebody in to terminate off.
Today is July 5th and the contract isn't up until the end of September. Just, we have a window to discuss that and decide how we want to proceed. Just, we have a window to discuss that and decide how we want to proceed, which is bound to, you know-
As far as this goes, this particular contract, or is there a specific, I don't, I think that they give us the opportunity to alter it one direction or the other rapidly, is my understanding. And I've spoken with Sheriff Baltieri about this before, and he said he would do whatever it took to make sure that we were satisfied with those services. And if it's too much and we're too little, he's willing to be flexible and work with us, just like the contract says. It may be sixty days instead of hundred-and-twenty, but it's still, I think maybe the reason why we're getting ahead of this is to announce our intentions that we want to continue to engage with the sheriff's department. I could be wrong, but this is probably giving them time to plan, just like it's giving us time to plan. But the last thing that I would do is them to not have the manpower to service us because we delayed it. Either way, I think that we could probably, because it's a shorter running contract, we could delay this vote if the council sees so, and then talk about it after the next work session. I leave that up to the council. Before I go to the citizens, do we have any other comments from the council? Yes, Ms. Notaro.
I just noticed, and I should have seen this before, on page four of six, says notice shall be given to Lynn Reeves, city manager.
That, that should probably be altered.
Yeah, just city manager, period. I have to make a motion to amend or dissent. Interim city manager.
I think it's something that we can correct.
Technographical error, it'll be corrected. The motion as you currently have is sufficient.
Okay, any other council comments before I take it to the citizens? Citizens, any comments? All right, let's bring it back to the council, and Leslie Notaro has the last word.
I say we vote on it.
Okay. Patty, I think we're going to do another roll call vote on this.
Councilmember Banker? Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
No.
Councilmember Zabel?
No.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Nay.
Mayor Gaddis?
No.
So the motion fails four to three, and we're moving right on to item number twenty. This is to authorize the interim city manager to execute a purchase order for the replacement of Bayside Park play structure. Do I have a motion?
Move to authorize.
Notaro, and do I have a second? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Ms. Notaro, you have the floor.
I think this looks like a definite proper rendition to our park out there, and I think it would be great. I wish I had little kids to play on. Do you have any kids?
Other comments from the council?
Got a question?
Vice Mayor Gunn?
The, is Tammy's too hairy? The parks are wrecked, or, I, I didn't follow all their discussion. Was this one of the recommendations that they proposed, funding this playground equipment? I mean, it seems to me they're the parks wreck people that just have their full support. And if so, they have a budget, are they stakeholders, and are they willing to chip in and make a contribution to this equipment?
Mr. Referee?
There was part of the recommendations to replace the playground in their surveys that they did at the parks. And then I, in the meeting, I told them that the next step would be to propose it to the council for the replacement. At the very least, we have to do something about the current playground.
So do they feel strongly enough to obligate some of their budget towards this equipment?
I have to go back and ask them. I can't speak for them.
Motion to table until we have some feedback on the park's renovation.
All right, we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Julie Shirley. Let's take a vote on this one.
Can we make kind of a comment on the motion to table?
I can comment on the, uh, motion to table. Ms. Jentry, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Banker?
No.
Councilmember Notaro?
No.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Shirley?
Yes.
Councilmember Zabel?
No.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
No.
So the motion to table fails, and we are right back to the discussion. Do we have any other comments from the council right now? Yes, Ms. Notaro.
In the memorandum, it says, "The funding is available in the twenty-one, twenty-two capital projects budget." So it's not like we're using next year's money or that the money's not there. It's in the budget.
Thank you for bringing that up, and that was going to be my next comment. Do we have any other comments right now?
That was going to be one of my questions. Is it actually budgeted, or is it just excess in the funding? I'm trying to understand this. Is this something in previous council? Like, is it for?
It's budgeted, the capital projects for the Bayside Park master plan, so it's improvements towards the park.
I just find it interesting when we go, "We have no kids, but let's, let's vote to spend fourteen thousand dollars."
I'm, I'm going to challenge that. We do have kids, they just don't live on your street, and I would, I would rather them be here in this park than running up and down the street, because we still do have a little bit of a speeding problem, and this is a great place for them to come and burn off some energy if there was something for them to do out there.
And I'd just make note, this, this structure's for age two to five, so if they're running in the street, that's probably a bigger problem than, um-
You aren't correct.
And, and I am the first one that would use this. I have now four grandchildren. We would use all under the age of five. But I don't want to spend fifteen thousand dollars on the city's money entertaining my grandchildren that don't live here in the city. And that's, and so I'm just trying to be realistic to make sure, one, you know, we're still budgeting, we're still talking about plan, you know, all these unfinished utility projects. There's so many things on the table. Is a place set for a two- to five-year-old top priority for the city?
So I'm going to, I'm going to challenge you on that. That budget was approved, and the money was set aside for that park, is that correct?
Currently, we have fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars currently in funding.
So we, for some reason, we voted to approve a budget for that park, but what else are we going to do with it?
I think there was a big plan, a big master plan for the entire park. Am I correct in saying we had a master plan?
The last plan was the grant, the hundred thousand dollar grant we put together. So since then, there has not been a plan for that.
And-
See the plan float around, and you're saying, you know, I don't know whatever came with that.
That, that plan failed because it was asking for way more money than we would ever be willing to budget for that park. So even though they were willing to give us money, we had to meet them dollar for dollar, and we did not have it. We were trying to figure out how to cut corners and save our money, and I think that this is a compromise compared to what, what we were originally talking about. Now, that funding, does it also include what's going on with the seawall out here?
No, that's separate.
Completely separate, okay. I don't have any more comments right now. Anyone else before I go to the citizens? The current condition of that equipment out there now, is it dangerous?
It's at the point where it needs to be removed. So at the very least, I think I'd like approval to remove, demolish what's existing.
Then nobody gets hurt or sued.
It has no replacement parts available. It's, the plastic itself is deteriorating, the slide is falling.
I agree with a council member about spending fifteen thousand dollars on entertaining the kids. I mean, I, I have a hard time with that, but if you're going to have a park, you have a park, so, like, stuck in the middle here. My kid, grandkids go over there and play, and I've noticed it's deteriorating pretty Any other comments?
We went through one iteration of this a couple of years ago, where we yellow taped off the area, and did we replace any of that equipment, or did we just remove some that are really-
We attempted the repair of the slide, and it broke again, so it's a-
What's the average lifespan on this hardware?
I have to check with the manufacturer, but they, they told me it was past useful life. I don't, I need the exact date. It's twenty-plus years now.
Did they take Florida sun into consideration, or is it in shade over there?
Uh, well, it's in shade, but it has its own challenges with the, the branches and the moisture and all that, but-
Okay, but let's take the citizens' right quick, and then we'll dial it back in up here and take a vote. Come on, guys. All right, back to the council. Leslie, you have the last word.
I say we vote.
Okay, let's take it to a vote. Patty, please call the roll.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
No.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Nay.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes.
So it passes five to two. Mr. Referee, you may proceed with the playground equipment. All right, we are now on to unfinished business. All right, we have no unfinished business. We're on to item twenty-two, which is council comments. This month, we go in reverse alphabetical order, so we'll start with Councilmember Zabel. Time is served, we first. Actually, I don't want to waste your time. Enjoy your evening. That's all I have. Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Shirley.
Yeah, I don't have much more to say. It was nice to see the seats full, to change everyone left from all the meeting, but thanks for coming out and participating.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Nothing additional.
Councilmember Notaro?
Um, yes, and regarding all the people that are out here before, those were all condo people from the beach who were here to talk about the buoy thing. And I was reading in last week's Bellar Beach, Beach Beach, whatever it is, that Indian Rocks is having the same, Antirax Beach is having the same issues with their buoys and stuff. And I think we should, it would benefit us to work with the other communities along the beach to get together, you know, plus, we've got the big sea meeting here at the end of July. Right, Patty?
Yes.
You know, we should put it on the agenda then, on that agenda, and discuss it, and have our, our city manager and our city attorney work with the official, their comparable officials from the other cities, and see if we can get together and come up with a workable solution other than the boating zones and swimming zones and stuff. Maybe if we do that together, we could have some influence on the guys up in Tallahassee who are messing with the buoys.
Thank you very much.
I've got a related question to that.
Okay, we'll run ahead of you.
Related to that, my question is, is, do the Indian Rocks, do they just pop up on the radar, or is this, are they just getting caught up in our debacle with the seawalls?
I don't have actual information on what happened with that. I can get that answered.
I could answer that question. It says, "In April of this year, we were notified by the Fish and Wildlife Commission that our buoy system may not be in compliance with new state statutes." And that's exactly what happened to us. So the new state statutes have affected all of the beach communities.
I have to correct you there.
Okay.
Point of order, they're not new state statutes. They, they was passed by the legislation in two thousand and nine, went into effect in two thousand and ten. I talked to Mr. Moore that there is a workable solution here under thirty-two seven, point forty-six of the statute, one A hundred and forty. All right, Ms. Banker, hold on a second.
Oh, I got point of order.
You can't call a point of order to stop someone from speaking. It actually has to be dealt with aggressively. And as far as I'm concerned, you're a point of order right now because you didn't let her finish her thoughts. So we can continue with this point of order, or we can drop it and let Leslie Notaro finish speaking, and then you will lead next and vote.
He can make his comments in his opportunity to speak. But I guess, my, my point is that things have changed in the last, just this year. Everyone got these notifications saying that our buoy systems were, were not in compliance. So I think it would help if we were to get together as all the beach communities to discuss what we want to do, maybe, you know, like the strength in numbers thing, that we can all, we can all work together and see what we can do to improve the situation slash corrected slash whatever you want to call it. So that's my comments, and my council comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Banker, you're up.
Okay, I'll get back to that later, but I'm going to talk about the comments that were made about the thirteen and twelve street projects. If you don't live on twelve and thirteen street, we have flooding problems, maybe we'll listen to this, not, I don't mean to waste your time. But last month, a few council members commented on why they felt the twelve and thirteen street project should have not been voted to proceed. I will, I was one that did vote for the project and would like to express the reasons why. At the work session in May sixteenth, discussing moving forward with the project, the engineer stated that the pipe's were seventy-three years old and at least one failure. He further noted previous repairs and a couple depressions in the street. He further stated repeatedly, "It was time to replace these pipes, and projects should move forward." The former city manager stated that during videoing of the pipes, a couple of joints had failures. The engineer further stated that the condition of asphalt now can be reworked, but five years from now could be questionable. The mayor asked about joints that are broken and how to repair, and the engineer said that wrapping the system to the joints could be an temporary solution, but noted not a fix, hence most probably less than a three to five-year fix. The city manager was also asked about exploring and going into repair mode. The city manager at the time was clear that we would be gambling by doing this, but we should at least replace all the inlets, and there's six of them. One council person, when asked about going forward with this project, said she was against putting a Band-Aid on this, and it should be moved forward. Last month during council comments, a council member said he called it an engineering and was told that this project would not cure the problem. Although, citizens and the city manager stated that since the check valves were installed on twelfth and thirteenth street, it was made, it has made a real difference. Let's be clear, replacing the pipes was never, ever mentioned or presumed that this would cure flooding, as has been the case on previous stormwater repairs in the city. The question before council was, should we move forward in replacing the current pipes, which we knew had coupling failures and collapsed pipes, simply to restore to the norm? For the norm, I went out and looked at the drainage inlets. There are six on this project, and some were so poorly deteriorated that the grating and concrete had collapsed into the drain. There are further a total of six coupons or previous digs on this project between the two streets and at least forty feet of patchwork near the Miami drainage curve. We further have a high water table when these pipes fail. Generally, when pipes fail, underneath it washes away the bedding and causes stress on each connecting pipe. Simply, who knows what desiccation compaction of the pipes east and west of each coupling failure is until they start excavation. It should be further noted that concrete pipes have steel rebar in them for strength. Concrete contains an alkaline environment that provides some protection against corrosion when the pipes are poured in manufacturing. The steel inside the concrete that is used for reinforcing will react with a factor which these pipes will experience for probably about seventy, seventy years plus. The problem is, these pipes are in salt water every day. Just a hairline crack will, can get into the rebar and deteriorate. Every day, these pipes have sea water coming in to some degree. When I noted to the engineer in the mayor's work session that my belief is the only way to cure flooding problems is by inserting pumps and possibly one catch basin for every two streets, that suggestion was returned with pumps are costly and no place to place a catch basin. Now, a catch basin could be placed underground at one end of each, any street and use two streets to do the basin. The bottom line, should we allow seventy-plus-year-old pipes, which has separations, compression failures, along with drainage inlets and deteriorations, to be one council, one council person's note to have a Band-Aid put on it and not go forward with it- to have a Band-Aid put on it and not go forward with the, proceeding with this project. Coming from the construction field, Band-Aid in a problem has truly never worked in my thirty-plus years' experience, especially with piping that is seventy-plus years old with noted numerous problems. Again, I've seen a huge, huge, huge difference in life expectancy of pipes from freshwater to salt water. So the question, again, before council, could some of these pipes last another twenty to thirty years? I don't believe in council members, we should be gambling with the city taxpayers' money. We must note that eight percent of the bid on that twelfth and thirteenth street, like any bid, is portability and moving equipment in and out. If that job got done and another failure happened, another eight to ten percent of cost would be incurred to this council by just moving an equipment to do another repair. I for one think that was a good move to pass and move forward with this project. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
In light of, I've got a couple points I'd like to make, best practices is one of them. This, this agenda, it seems to me we, we axled a little bit on this. We made some improvements in the readability of this thing by giving little snippets of what was entailed in that line item. In other words, we used to say, "Who submitted this agenda item?", and then there would be a sentence or two saying what the gist of this agenda item was. I mean, if we talk about approving the sheriff's contract, why, why couldn't we just throw out there, hey, the five-hundred, forty-nine-thousand-dollar total, it's gone up five-point-eight percent, and it includes a credit from Miller Shores? I mean, little snippets like that, the playground equipment, fourteen thousand, two hundred and four, we're piggybacking onto a Manatee County contract, and the existing equipment has passed its useful, serviceable life. I, I think we need to get back in that habit, and why I say that is because it would be nice if this agenda would be a little bit more self-sufficient and as a stinging dog than, instead of saying, "Okay, there's a budget, now I need to go digging the back of this Tokyo phone book and try to figure out what those numbers are," when we've got a lot of busy people up here, and it would be the readability and it would be a time savings for everybody. In other words, when you write this agenda, think of it in terms of the way we're gonna look at it, where we're gonna read it, right? You guys have, you deal with those issues all day long, but if it just took an extra couple of minutes to add another line or two, it would immensely improve the, the quality of life of the people sitting up here. So that's one issue. I saw the fire department stand there and show us a five-year projection looking down the road of revenues, expenses, and the burden weight of their, their reserve funds. We have yet to do that, and I think it's finally about time, again, and I'm starting, I wanna harp one more time on there's a protocol to all of this stuff, and there's a logical sequence to doing this stuff. I think we will probably get to the same point, and, hey, I had a huge input to that strategic plan. You've got several council members sitting up here who, who wrote that thing and put it into service, so we know that thing inside and out. So, I mean, again, there's a logical sequence, and this is a family plan. The strategic plan is tied to the budget process, it's tied to a lot of different things, and we need to make sure that everybody is, is baseline on everything. So we're making decisions based on common perceptions of what's going on and doing this stuff. Code enforcement stats, there's about forty-five line items in the existing code report. Twelve of those line items are reported as complaints from the residents. Now what's significant about that? The significance of that is that all of those other line items were caught by our code enforcement person driving around, making objective decisions about what to should do, what's important at that time. The importance of a complaint from a resident is, it's analogous to a direct feedback from our residents about what they consider to be the code enforcement issues of the day. What are their priorities in their board? What do they, is it landscaping? Is it trash? Is it people parking on the, on the street? I don't know. The, the issue I'm trying to raise here is if you look under those complaints, there's twelve of them, and just about half of them don't give any explanation of what the complaint was. There's such things as a possible ordinance violation, no violation noted, no violation noted, and there was one other one, neighbor complaint. It's not giving us the information we need to say what's important to the residents and what should we be focusing on in the code enforcement process. That's one thing. Item last, coming from a background where awards, citations, and presentations happen all the time, I would volunteer that perhaps it's, it's, it's benefiting when the mayor, as the head of the city, makes the presentation and stuff, but perhaps leave behind the citation or the letter you would like to read, and I'd be happy to, or any other council member can read, so everybody can hear what's going on, and then you're down there for the full opportunity. That's just a suggestion coming from my background. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you for the constructive criticism. I'll accept it gracefully. Thank you very much. All right, so I'd just like to, I want everyone to know that we appreciate the phone calls and emails. I hate that most of the condo owners that were here to speak didn't hang around. But that, I guess that's because we did our job, and it also means that they did their job. Just so you know, buoys may be important to someone in our city. I'm not sure who those are, who those people are, because I never received one email, not one phone call, not a single yay, I want buoys message or, or contact whatsoever. So the citizens did exactly what they're supposed to do, is reach out, read the agenda, see what's coming up, and contact us if you feel strongly about something. Just, I just mainly want you to know that, yes, the system does work, but you have to be engaged, you have to reach out to us. Otherwise, just like code enforcement, Vice Mayor just brought up, we don't really know what, what's on your mind unless you're willing to actually do something about it. And fortunately, with the way that the code laws read now, you, if you're gonna file a complaint, it goes on the record. But if you feel strong enough about something, you know, we do it all the time. We vote on things, and sometimes it goes the way that you like, and other times it'll go the way that you don't like. But it's, it's part of our beautiful city, and it's a responsibility that we should not take lightly. So also, issues that are being brought up, they may not be addressed super fast. Right now, we have a lot on our plate, we're trying to hire a City Manager, we're trying to balance a budget, we're gonna be looking at the strategic plan, and I can count right now at least five various important complaints that are coming from around the city that we're going to have to address, and a lot of it will be challenging our existing code, or at least making sure that what we have is legal and we can enforce it. All these things take time, and I just, all I ask is, everyone, please be patient with us while we get through this trying time, and then it'll be a little quieter next year. Other than that, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and also, did we ever have anyone that zoomed in at this time? Is there somebody online right now? No?
Wait, 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 wait. It looks like five.
Five people are watching this meeting. Well, that's, that is great, and again, I would like to congratulate Mr. Reeffler. Great job. And this is, this is awesome, because that's five more people that wouldn't be at this meeting. So that's great. All right, other than that, I would like a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Frank Baker, do we have a second?
Seven.
All right. Lloyd Roberts, all in favor?
Aye.
Ain't opposed. Good night, everyone.